Good evening. Welcome to the Glendale City Council meeting for Election Day, June 7th, 2022. There is still time to make it to the polls if you have not yet voted by mail or gone to a polling place today. And of course, we are excited to announce that the Beeline bus service is free today on Election Day as well. So get out there and vote. And we hope that tonight's meeting will be a quick one because we have some of our colleagues who have to go to various events, go out there and press a flesh and make sure that people are getting out to vote. With that, let us have roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Resident.
Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Kusakian. Here. Let's have the flag salute. Please rise and repeat after me.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please remain standing for identification.
Father, today is Election Day. We thank you for the ultimate duty, not only to vote, but to influence countless others to vote. With all of the injustice and fury in our world today, we ask you to inspire us and guide us as we participate in the elections. We seek a local government that upholds and protects human rights and justice for all its citizens regardless of race, class, gender, or religion. We pray for all this in your name. Amen.
Amen. All right. May we have your report, please?
Agenda for the June 7th, 2022 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on June 1st, 2022 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Let us have presentation and appointments. Three is agenda preview.
Next week, we'll start off our meetings with a joint meeting of the Housing Authority and Council with two items. First will be a fiscal year 2223 proposed annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant, and the Home Investment Partnership Act programs, followed by another report regarding the adoption of the 2223 Housing Authority Budget and Approval of Professional Services Agreement, with emphasis "software." We'll follow that up with another special meeting of the City Council in the afternoon regarding a request for approval of Stage Two Final Designer Review and Development Agreement for a 294-unit, 24-story residential project called Lucia Park located at 620 North Brand Boulevard and 625 North Maryland Avenue. And in the evening for the City Council meeting, a number of consent items. The first one is from Community Development regarding a Professional Services Agreement Amendment to increase the maximum cost of a contract with Overland Pacific and Cutler by $70,000, followed by another report from Community Services and Parks regarding the award of a contract for landscape maintenance of government facilities, followed by a report from Finance regarding unclaimed checks and deposits. And the final consent item that evening is from Public Works regarding the installation of a citywide battery backup system. And then under adoption of ordinances, depending on how the vote tonight goes, under the introduction of the ordinance, there could be an adoption of an ordinance, amending chapters 6.04 and 6.08 of Title VI of the Municipal Code related to dogs and cats. Under action items, the Finance Department will provide an annual water and power transfer report, followed by another report regarding the adoption of the city's fiscal year 2223 GAN appropriation limits. Public Works will provide the next three reports. The first is a levy of annual assessments and preparation of the engineer's report for fiscal year 2223 for the North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District, followed by another report regarding the award of a construction contract for the Broadway Rehabilitation Project. The last item from Public Works that evening will be the award of construction contract for the Maintenance District Six Pavement Rehabilitation Phase One Project. And the final action item that night will be from the City Attorney's Office regarding the City Clerk's certification of sufficiency of signatures on hotel worker safety protections and the fair compensation based on assigned work initiative measure. And we'll be requesting further direction from the City Council regarding that. Final item will be a hearing regarding the adoption of the city's 2223 fiscal year budget. That concludes next week's preview.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is...
Consent items, including minutes to following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion and member of council or audience requesting separate consideration. They do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Second. Okay, moved by Councilmember Agajanian and seconded by Councilmember Brotman. Let's have roll call.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yeah.
Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Kusakian.
Yes. Next item is...
City Council and staff comments.
Any of my colleagues have any comments? Yes, Councilmember Devine.
Thank you. Thank you very much. First off, I want to congratulate the Noon Rotary for very successful Cars for Cops. I think they had like 163 fabulous cars and hundreds of visitors. I think this was probably the most successful one that they had. And I thank the Police Department and Fire Department and also staff that were in attendance. The funds were going to be used for some of our most needy nonprofits. So congratulations and thank you all for that great work. I also attended, and I know probably all of my council members did, so I'll mention this very quickly, as Glendale Out celebrated Pride in the Park on Saturday. It was an event at Adams Square Mini Park. They invited families and friends for a picnic. And that was just a wonderful get-together, beautiful example of people sharing, a lovely day showing inclusion and love and acceptance. So bravo to Glendale Out. And I have my bracelet on that Senator Porton Tino was giving out. Third, I have an opening on the Transportation and Parking Commission. So if anyone out there is interested in being involved in public service, there is an opening. And please, if you're interested, get in touch with the City Clerk's Office. Did you want to say something?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. So that's Transportation and Parking. And finally, and this is, I would like to request that council adjourn in the memory of Lila Ramirez. Lila was a native of New Mexico who moved to California in 1962. She was a resident and active member of the Glendale community for 60 years, over 60 years, a relentless champion for advancing social justice and democratic values with a strong sense of empathy and concern for those in need. For over 60 years, she served numerous leadership roles for countless organizations and expanding opportunities for all. A successful business owner and entrepreneur, Lila's skills in business management, business development, and financial oversight were an invaluable asset to any organization for which she volunteered. Her in-depth knowledge of public policy with the preferences to policies impacting youth, girls, and women, education, our election process, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Her steadfast belief in the importance of civic engagement to our democracy contributed to her extraordinary service to our communities. To have known Lila was to know her generous heart to serve and her courageous voice that spoke out against injustice. This is hard to believe, but she was the middle child of 10 siblings who deeply loved her extended family. She was a devoted wife, mother, grandmother, and great-grandmother and treasured friends to many. She was married for 65 years to Richard, her beloved husband, and is survived by her daughters Marcia Ramos, a dear friend, and Jeannie Hutchinson, Nasa Ziegler, and Kristy Carnegie. Some of her Glendale community service I just want to mention, she was a member of the Charter Review Committee, the Downtown Glendale Specific Plan Committee, the Glendale Human Relations Coalition, the Census Counts Committee. She was my appointment to the Community Development Block Grant Committee, and I was proud to appoint her. She served on initial planning committees of Unity Fest, Week of Remembrance, and Cesar Chavez Day. She was a senior peer counselor at Glendale Memorial, past president of the Rosboise Mountain Homeowners Association, member of the Glendale Historic Society, Glendale Healthy Kids, Glendale Latino Association, Glendale Community Center Catholic Charities, and also the League of Women Voters since 1964. I think Lila was a great contributor, a wonderful person, a kind person, and of course, well-respected by many. And I know that she will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And yes, we will adjourn in memory of Lila Ramirez. Her daughter Marcia Ramos is a former council member and mayor in Burbank and their current representative on the Metropolitan Water District. My sincere condolences to the Ramirez family, especially Richard. Any other comments? Yes, Councilmember, go ahead. Councilmember Najarian and Agajanian.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to announce that I am now a grandfather. My oldest son, Alexander, my oldest son Alexander and his wife Anna gave birth to a seven-pound, three-ounce bouncing baby boy, Edward Alexander Najarian, yesterday. And there aren't any authorized photos yet. The publicist has not released them. And maybe I'll pass those around at a later date. But thank you and good luck to the new baby and his new parents.
Congratulations. That is exciting.
I would like to congratulate my colleague Aron Najarian for becoming a grandfather. Wow.
Looks too young, right?
A young grandfather.
He looks too young, right?
I want to go back to Ms. Lila Ramirez because I used to see her very often. And her husband, as has been mentioned here, Richard Ramirez, which my condolences to him, he's another professional engineer, by the way. Another engineer that we have been friends for years and years. And I didn't know that she passed away. She was so energetic until the last time I saw her. Can't remember. It was a few, a month ago or so. My condolences to Ramirez family and Marcia, as has been mentioned, former mayor of Burbank, and especially to my friend, Richard Ramirez. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Brotman? No? All right. Then I would like to actually mention a few of the events that we attended. Obviously, the Glendale Out event. There was also the event in Studio City, which was presented about here. The Queerness Age was able to attend that. Both very well attended. It was great to see all those families and Glendale residents and friends coming together to celebrate pride and to just be with each other on such an important occasion. It was a very nice event. So kudos to those who organized it. Obviously, Cars for Cops, congratulations again to Noon Rotary. And then we had a very special visit from His Beatitude, the Catholicos of Armenian Catholics around the world, His Beatitude Rafael Bedros, 21, who's been here now for over a week. He was actually here as a priest for the church that we all pass on Mountain and Verdugo, which is the St. Gregory's Armenian Church. It's actually a Catholic cathedral, an Armenian Catholic cathedral. He was instrumental in the construction and establishment of that. So it was good to welcome him for a sort of homecoming. And it was a very nice event. Also had the opportunity to attend the LA Beirut Sister City Association's event that was honoring Adel Hajkalil, the current general manager of the Metropolitan Water District for his great work and involvement with the Lebanese-American community, specifically that organization. I know that our police also had a very successful presentation at Home Menara Chapter this weekend, talking to parents about the growing drug crisis and addiction and the dangers that parents are facing out there. Again, I want to congratulate all the kids who are graduating high school and congratulate all the parents who've gone them to high school. But please stay informed, educate yourself, contact the city so you can learn more about what are some of the dangerous things that are out there that are available, that are trying to influence your children. Make sure that we're doing all we can to protect our youth from what is out there. And of course, there was also a, last Tuesday, even though we were dark, there was a group that gathered to commemorate the unfortunate tragedy, the school shooting at Uvalde, as well as all the other, the epidemic of mass shootings that we're facing here as a country. So I tried to attend as many events and as many gatherings to be with our citizens as possible, as my colleagues do as well. I know we may not have gone to some, but this is just a sampling of what we have attended. I wanted to ask during these council comments for a second on an item. And it is, we, our office, I have been approached by the mayor of the city of Marduni in Artsakh to establish a sister-city relationship. Artsakh, obviously, just recently went through a war when the forces of Azerbaijan, Turkey, combined with the forces of other nations, attacked the peaceful people in that region. There was ethnic cleansing, there was destruction of monuments, numerous human rights violations. And then there was a tentative peace that was brokered. And there's negotiations now in terms of the status of borders and the status of the people that live there. We are a community that has a lot of people from Artsakh. We were visited by the director of the diaspora for that region, as well as their representative in Washington, DC. I believe that we need to stand with the peaceful and democracy-loving people of Artsakh. So I would like to see if anyone would second that.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. And then we would ask staff to follow up with that, and we'll put them in touch with the right people. Lastly, or two more items. One is just a follow-up. So if staff can tell us next meeting when the review of the ordinance for animated and digital signs will be coming back to us for discussion and consideration to address what we may need to change in our code. And also restaurant delivery app fees. During the pandemic, we, this council, supported a very important action to protect our local restaurants and businesses from the exorbitant prices that sometimes these delivery apps will charge for delivery or being the intermediary between the customer and the restaurant. That was necessary, I think, during the pandemic. But if anyone has been to restaurants since and in talking to folks, both at ICSC and around town, restaurants are back. A lot of them are doing better and have had some of the best years yet. Those who survived, of course, the pandemic and that depression of activity. I'd like to see if we can have that fee moratorium or cap removed now and have the market handle itself. Do I need any other, do I need a second for that? Yes, thank you. All right. And that is all. Thank you very much. All right. Do we have any callers for any?
Yes, we have, Mayor, we have two callers for community event announcement, three-minute portion.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Tony Passarella, you have three minutes. Go ahead, Tony.
Evening, Mayor, council members. Tony Passarella. I find it curious that council members Nagajanian, Devine, and Mayor Kasakian didn't mention the fact that they were at the memorial at Forest Lawn Glendale. I wonder why that wasn't mentioned. Anyway, here's my interpretation of that event. Travesty, an absolute travesty. It was a promotion, basically, very little to do with the dead soldiers, but very much to do with promoting police, fire, community commission, school board. I mean, it was on and on and on about Glendale. And what is a fire, hook-and-ladder fire engine doing there? I mean, it was just, it was nothing to do with, you know, the dead soldiers. I mean, from my research, 405,000 at least died in World War II. And Mayor, not Mayor, but Major General McCarley, is that his name? Wow. That guy was off the rails, talking about Ukraine and Putin and Uvalde shooting, Buffalo shooting. What does that have to do with our fallen heroes? Absolutely nothing. I mean, he's mentioning he wants to put up 205,000 flags next year and representing, you know, everybody, all the citizens in Glendale? Nonsense. I mean, it's just absolute nonsense. And the presentation of colors by the Glendale Police Department. I was at the Hollywood Hills one, and that was Mayor Kasakian. That was somber and noble, because that's what you said in your speech. You mentioned, and I'm quoting you, "somber and noble tradition." Well, what went on there was not somber or noble. The one in Hollywood Hills was the bagpipe musicians were exported from Glendale to Hollywood Hills. No playing of taps in Glendale. They did play taps, which makes it somber at Hollywood Hills. Basically, my thought is that, I can understand Mayor Kasakian being there and speaking, but my opinion was that Nagajanian and Councilmember Paul Devine were just grandstanding. That's the way I see it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Passarella. Who's the next caller? Yeah?
Edmund Hagopian, you got three minutes. Edmund, go ahead.
Okay. Dear Mr. Mayor and council members, this is Edmund Hagopian. Thank you for the opportunity to bring up my concern. I have a property, my property is budding against the Verdugo Wash, and it's along the wash. I have rather long exposure to the wash. And I'm opposing the bypass project north of the wash basin. Among other concerns, me and some neighbors, like many neighbors, we have is the unhoused people's issue that will be dragged into the area. The unhoused people's problem is an issue at our doorstep, literally. Last weekend, I had a lady slipping in front of my property next to the wash entrance, who was using my construction porta potty and on-site water. And I was concerned about her safety first, because it's a construction area, we're doing work, and there's all sorts of hazard for somebody that's probably not in a good state of mind. When I approached her and asked her not to step on the property, she greeted me with profanities and insult, which I'm pretty thick-skinned. I don't mind that, but a neighbor and myself, we called Glendale PD, and they showed up within minutes. That's very good level of service. However, they were not able to do anything because by slipping in the wash entrance, she was not breaking any law. And that just, just the bypass project, if it gets realized, north of the wash basin will just spiral the unhoused people's problem that we're already dealing with spiraled out of control. And I believe no one deserves to have to deal with this problem on an ongoing basis. And that's a big concern of ours.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you for everyone who called. The only thing I would say about the Memorial Day events, we are hoping that the Veterans Committee that had traditionally organized a Memorial Day event at the city will regroup and reorganize. We, as a city, are willing to help them in that effort to ensure that next year that there is a event, as there has been in years past. As far as what was organized at Forest Lawn, you know, people can disagree on what they want to hear on that day. The only thing I will say is that I believe the service of Major General Mark McCarley has earned him license to say whatever he wishes to say, having served this country with honor, probably having seen servicemen lose their lives in service of this country and defending our values and rights, including the right to free speech, the First Amendment, which Mr. Passarella utilizes and uses regularly at these council meetings. So agree to disagree. Next is adoption of ordinances. Let's have 7A read into the record.
Management services regarding an ordinance of the city of Glendale, California, menning portions of Chapter 5.92 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 to allow for third-party issuance of oversight.
I'll...
This was introduced by Councilmember Devine.
And I will, I will move that item.
Yes. Is there a second?
Six.
Okay. There was a second by Councilmember Nagajanian. Let's have oral call, please.
Councilmember Nagajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes. Thank you very much. It is adopted. Let's have item 8A.
It would be Action Items 8A, Police Department Regarding Professional Service Agreement with Pasadena Humane Society for Animal Control Services. One motion authorizing the city manager or is designated to execute an agreement with Pasadena Humane Society for Animal Control Services for a five-year period in the amount not to exceed $5,010,464. Ordinance for introduction is number two.
Hey. Good evening, Mayor Kasakian, members of city council. I'm Captain Robert Williams, and I'll try to keep this brief in the interest of time. So we've been in contract with Pasadena Humane Society for the past 16 years. Pasadena Humane Society has been responsible for providing the city with animal care, animal control, and wildlife services. Those services include field operations, medical services, shelter services, community-based programming and education. And again, we've been with them for 16 years. The service has been meeting our satisfaction and as well as the community. And that contract will be coming to an end at the end of this month, and staff is recommending to enter into a new agreement with Pasadena Humane Society for five years. All the services remain the same, with the exception, the only thing that is being added is that Pasadena Humane Society will now take over the licensing and kennel permitting processes that was currently being done by the city neighborhood services. So that's the only new addition to the services that we agreed upon. That contract is, the new agreement is for five years, for, as mentioned, just a little over $5 million, $5,010,000. It is, the first year will be a 3% increase from the previous year, and then additional four years will be adjusted to the CPI and capped at 3% and not to exceed that $5,010,000 amount. And I have with me today a representative or staff from Neighborhood Services if there's any specific questions about licensing and permitting. We also have representatives from Pasadena Humane Society. The president and CEO of Pasadena Humane Society, Ms. Dia Duveray, is here, as well as the director of Field Operations, Lieutenant Artega from Pasadena Humane Society is here as well, if you have any questions.
Mr. Mayor.
All right. Let's, let me turn to Councilmember Nagajanian.
I asked before, but first, I want to move this item because it has to do with dogs. So the only problem I have, that if somebody is not familiar with the computer, resides in Glendale, see, before, they were going to city clerks or others, and then later has moved to other departments in the city. Now, how, they have to reach to Pasadena, they are, I mean, to get the license for their dog. That, I still am confused. How are they gonna do it? If they're not familiar with the computer, they don't have computer, and they want to get the permit or license.
Mayor Kasakian, members of city council, Councilmember Nagajanian, we realize that there is going to be a transition period for members of our residents who are used to coming to Neighborhood Services for those, for those processes. So we do intend to notify the public through public education and through our social media platforms. There will be a transition period, as we suspect that, you know, individuals may come down to Neighborhood Services, and staff is here to address that if need be. But they would help our residents through that process to transitioning from coming to Glendale to going to Pasadena Humane Society. The services offered in the licensing and kennel permitting process can be done online as well as in person. So if an individual is willing to come down to Glendale, all they would have to do in the following years is to start going to Pasadena.
That's what bothers me. Two years later, somebody doesn't have a car and doesn't have computer, but they have dogs. There are lots of people, elderly people, they have dogs and no cars, no computer. Then I don't know how this is gonna be working. That's what bothers me. But anyway.
Well, let's actually, it's a very good point that you raised. Can we look into having a kiosk, a computer set up? And I'm sure that whatever process is being there in this modern age of communication and technology, we should be able to set up at least a kiosk or some sort of interface where folks can at least be assisted in that first transitionary year or whenever it is to be able to do it here, even though it's being administered by Pasadena?
Yeah, we can certainly explore that option. We can speak with Pasadena Humane Society and see if those types of kiosks are available, and if we can put one in our Neighborhood Services office or in a city clerk's office, we can certainly look into that and see what we can do.
All right, I move the item.
There's a motion and an introduction.
There's a motion, and so...
So the introduction for the ordinance would be the change of language, removing from city clerk's office to the Neighborhood Services as well as Pasadena Humane Society.
And I'd be happy to introduce that ordinance, and then go ahead, Dan.
I'll second.
Okay. So ordinance introduction by Councilmember Devine, and then motion made by Councilmember Nagajanian, seconded by Najarian. May we have oral call, please?
Mayor, I do believe there's a call coming in.
On this particular item?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We will wait. And in the meantime, as we're waiting for this call to come through, thank you, Captain Williams. But in terms of what we, I expect, it doesn't have to be a kiosk per se, but I'm sure that there will be a process by which people can get their licenses renewed. I mean, I renew my DMV registration online, so there will probably be a web portal where the Pasadena Humane allows it. We can just have that portal at the city to have a staff person. If someone comes and says, "I'm here to get my dog license," to not say, "Go to Pasadena," that's where it's done. Someone here at the city should be able to help them do it right here and onsite. And I think that would be, I think that's what the concern is, Councilmember Nagajanian. I think we all share that. The last thing we want is anyone to come to the city and then be told to go elsewhere. Yes, who's the caller?
Victoria Valentine, you have three minutes, Victoria. Go ahead.
Yes. I, thank God, I just made it. I couldn't find the number. You're not showing the number to call. But I am questioning Pasadena Humane Society. I need to see what work they're doing. That it needs to be stated that this is a kill shelter, that it's in no way a no-kill shelter, that, and to find out how many dogs have been killed. It seems like $3,333 a day. Maybe we could, the police could build a command that could hunt, hunt down those wild animals that are running up and down the canyon and taking our freedom and peace away. But yes, they need to be, we need to see what they have done. Five years ago, there were two years that, that was, three years in pandemic, two, I have not seen lines of people lined up there. I'm not prepared, I apologize. I don't know where I'm at. I had to say it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Valentine. Okay. Oral call? Did we have oral call already? No, we have not yet.
No.
Councilmember Nagajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Yes. Can you please read item 8B into the record?
Public works regarding, one-year contract extension for parking citations, delinquent collections, and preferential parking permit program services. One resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing the city manager or is designated to execute amendment to contract with Professional Account Management, LLC, an operating entity of Duncan Solutions for parking citation processing, delinquent collections, and preferential parking permit program services, extending the duration for one year and increasing the amount by $187,500.
This is a one-year extension. Does anyone wish to have a report or make a motion?
Move to approve this item, 8B.
Yeah, I'll second that.
And it's been seconded, moved and seconded. If there is no discussion and no callers?
No callers.
All right. Let us have oral call, please.
Councilmember Nagajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes. All right. Next item is oral communication. Do we have any callers for oral communication?
Mayor, we do not have any callers.
All right. And if there is no other new business?
There is one item of new business.
One item of new business?
Mr. Mayor, I would ask for a motion, I would ask for a motion that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to retain McKuen and Harbor LLP to assist the city attorney's office as needed with pending litigation matters. In addition to other provisions, the agreement shall contain a fee cap.
I'll move the item.
Sec.
Okay. Oral call, please.
Councilmember Nagajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes. If there is no other new business, would you?
I would like to, for, to adjourn the meeting in memory of Lila Ramirez.
All right. Moved and seconded, we stand adjourned at 6:49 PM. There's still time to go to the polls. Go out and vote. Thank you.